Push that button. I call the special meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD School Board to order at 6:01 PM on August 24. Members of the staff, board members, audience, you are free to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Kim Brady and the Texas pledge led by Carolyn Benavides.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, unuttered, one and indivisible.
Begin this evening by explaining just a moment. We just arrived back within just barely an hour ago from Austin where the board has participated in mandatory school board training. And we had an excellent experience. It went very well. Dr. Eldridge proved to be a good driver of our suburban and we're back and safe. And we all said that we would wear our CFB Proud shirts tonight because if you can't be proud when you set the tax record, you can't be proud at all. As a district, we dedicate all of our efforts to the goal of high expectations for all. And this goal guides all of our deliberations, decisions, and actions. At this meeting, you will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session. There are some items generally that are allowed to be conducted in a closed session. I don't believe we have any of those this evening. For the record, board members present are Tara Herbacheck, Kim Brady, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Eliana Garza Rojas, Cassandra Hatfield, and me, Randy Jacquesman. We constitute a quorum and as such may conduct business on behalf of the district. All right. This is a special meeting at a unique time because of the tax implications involved and required of us. And so the next item is item number two, the public meeting to discuss the 2025 budget and proposed tax rate.
Thank you.
The time is now 6:04, and we will move to that.
Thank you, Superintendent, members of the board. This item is an annual event. It's required by law. We have a public hearing and just to make some comments in advance of opening up to the public, I wanted to make a few comments. The budget obviously is something that a lot of work has gone into with the administration and the board. A lot of hours have gone into it. The budget, I think, is something that you can say is it affects every student, affects every teacher, affects every parent, every guardian, every employee, every vendor that does business with the school district, and it obviously affects every taxpayer that pays taxes. So it's an important document. I think you could even argue that stated in financial terms, the budget is the district's educational plan. It's not only a statement of those activities that we are mandated to involve ourselves in or we choose to involve ourselves in. Core subjects are mandated. There's a lot of other activity that occurs that greatly benefits kids such as athletics and fine arts and vocational. Many of those are not mandated. So this budget provides the vehicle for all of those activities to take place. It's not only a statement of those activities that we choose or mandated to involve ourselves in, but it's also a statement of how we intend to pay for those activities. And I'd like to kind of direct your attention to the slides. And I'm going to get this right here. Here we go. We've got some slides in here and I want to talk briefly about some issues that school districts are having to face, not just us, but many other school districts. Texas school districts, and we've talked in our workshop before, this next year will be the sixth straight year that we've been at the current basic allotment, which is $6,160 per student. Texas is like the 40, if you list all states in the nation in terms of spending per student, Texas is right toward the bottom. We're like number 43 out of 50. So Texas has been very conservative in terms of what it allocates for public education. And for the last five years, this '24-'25 being six years, we've been at the current basic allotment of $6,160. We've had tremendous inflationary factors that have affected the school district, just for example, fuel. It's, we have very limited discretion over how much fuel we use if we're going to pick kids up and deliver them in the evening, if we're going to take them to their events, we're going to buy the fuel. Four years ago, fuel was around $2, and now it's over $3. So we've had a 50% increase just in fuel alone. Energy costs drive utilities. Our utility costs are up. Insurance costs are up across the board. Property insurance this last year went up about 30%. And so there's almost everything that we buy is going up. And so what you will find across the state, Tasbo has done a survey of districts and they're estimating that as many as 80% of the districts in the state will be adopting a deficit budget. In our case, we're in pretty good shape financially because of our fund balance. And hopefully this next session will generate some new revenues for us. And we can only hope at this point that it will. School districts are required by statute to adopt three funds, and that's your general operating fund, your student attrition fund, and your debt service fund. And then once those are adopted, then a board is required to adopt a tax rate. In most districts, as in our case, we have two tax rates. We have a MNO tax rate and we have an INS tax rate. Maintenance and operation is for everyday expenses and the debt service fund or INS is for the repayment of principal and interest and related costs. And that's the only thing that those funds may be used for. You cannot use them for anything else. The proposed budget is for the general fund, again, the debt service and the food service. The estimated revenues that you see here are $297 million, $500,000, around numbers. And we will also have estimated, estimate our expenditures at $316 million. So we're going to have a little over a $19 million deficit that we're recommending to you for the general fund. One of the things I want to point out on this slide is that you'll see on the expenditure column where it says instruction, instructional resources, and media services, curriculum and instruction, staff development. You'll see in this format is mandated for all school districts. Excuse me. But this format you'll see in any school district. And as you read down the page, you'll note that as you go down the page, you get further and further away from the classroom. And that's intentional and by design so that all school districts have the same format. And you'll see that, thank you, in all of the functions that you see at the top of that list are direct services to students. Instruction is classroom instruction, is things that happen in the classroom. Instructional resources and media is libraries, libraries and media services. You've got curriculum and instruction and staff development, that's teacher training. You've got instructional leadership, which our leadership is working directly with staff and in some cases, students. School leadership is your principals and your office staff, they're working directly with students. You've got guidance and counseling, again, working directly with students. Social work services, working again directly with students and parents. You've got health services, providing health services to students. You've got student transportation, picking kids up and taking them home and getting them to where they need to be. You've got food services, which is direct services to students. You've got extracurricular activities, sports and other activities that are direct services to students. And then you come finally to general administration. So you can see, if you just look at the numbers, the vast majority of the budget that's allocated within these functions are for services that directly impact students. When you come to the general administration number, you'll see that $9,800,000 is allocated for general administration. But most of the activities that occur within general administration are required by law. We have payroll, we have purchasing, we have accounts payable, we have employee benefits, we have tax collections. All of those services that occur that are indirect services, that I would call indirect services to students, virtually all of those are mandated by law. We have to run payrolls, as an example. The general administration too, if you look at that number as a percentage of the overall budget, it's a little over 3%, about 3.1% of the total budget. It, you know, and sometimes you'll hear people say that general administration, you spend too much on general administration. As a percentage of the budget, it's just a little over 3%, about 3.1. And the vast majority of the activities that occur within a general administration are mandated. There's no way around them. Then you have facilities maintenance and operation. Again, that's the purpose of that function is to create a clean, comfortable, safe environment for kids to learn and teachers to teach. And that's where our utilities are and all of our custodians and everything that's needed to maintain our campuses. Security and monitoring services, again, is for the most part is direct services to students, but it's for keeping our children and our employees safe. Data processing services, again, most of the activity that occurs, almost all of it within that function is mandated. We're required, we're required by TEA rule to take attendance, for example. If you've got an eight-period day, you're taking attendance eight times a day for every student for every day of the year, every school day of the year. And it takes people and processes to do that. It's a tremendous amount of data that's accumulated by a school district every year and transmitted to TEA through the Public Education Information Management System, or PEMS. And it's a very complicated process. Same thing with teachers. We have to maintain a file on every single teacher, every single employee. We have to maintain records for them for payroll or their service record or whatever they are. And all of those activities are mandated and you have to process all of that data and all of those costs are paid for through the data processing services function. We have a small amount of money for community services. Debt services, again, is to repay debt, repay the principal, interest, and related fees. And then we have some small payments to juvenile justice system where kids get in trouble and they need to go somewhere and house for a little while. And then we have other governmental services. I want to jump back up to contracted instructional services. Just intuitively, when you look at that function, you think it's instruction. Well, it's not. It's, that's what your recapture is. It's a word that TA, a phrase that TA uses because they don't want to use the word Robin Hood and they don't want to use the word recapture. But that $11 million is what is our estimate of our excess tax collections and we will have to remit that $11 million to the state of Texas in the form of recapture. But on this page, it's called contracted instructional services. And so we have a total budget here of $316 million and we're estimating a deficit of roughly $19 million. We are going to, we've got, you know, we're going to have some efforts throughout the year to reduce the budget deficit, deficit mitigation efforts, as we're calling it. And we believe we can do that. It does look like, at least early on, when we look at our enrollment for this year, it looks like enrollment is holding up well compared to last year. It's about flat. And so, and we built this budget based on last year's numbers. And so we think we're going to be okay so far. The next page here, as you can, as you can see here, this is just another slice of how we look at the budget as far as payroll, professional and contracted services, supplying materials, and so on. The vast majority of the budget is in payroll. The budget, in addition to everything else that it is, it's also an economic driver in our community. The vast majority of the budget is going to be paid out in salaries to people who work and live in our communities and that money will be spent in our community. So in my mind, it's, the budget is a powerful economic driver within our community also. The proposed MNO and debt service tax rates, what we're recommending to you tonight initially is that we would maintain the tax rate to be flat. And this, as you can, as you can see here, you can see the '23-'24 and '24-'25 columns, both are at 9.9836. And we have made an adjustment on this recommendation where the MNO is going down slightly, the INS going up slightly. And so that's our, that's our recommendation is right now, is to keep the tax rate flat. And that's the end of my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have before we turn it over to the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Just adding on to what you're saying, we just got through with this conference for two days and one of the regional directors for this organization was commenting that of the 25 school districts that he works for, 23 are adopting deficit budgets. And the, one of the two that isn't adopting a deficit budget is because they have removed funds from their fund balance to, they've made the decision to cover it that way. But just, it adds, I appreciate your giving us that information, that detailed report. The rules that TEA and the Texas Legislature have put in place for us as a school district is that in adopting a budget like this, we must hold a public hearing, which we are in the process of doing. And we're going to ask if there is anyone here who has any questions that you would like to pose about this budget or to Mr. Martin, would you raise your hand? I see none. So we're going to go ahead and close the officialness of the public meeting. We'll continue with our regular meeting, but the public meeting portion will be closed. Another thing that the legislature has us do every time that we meet is to give opportunity for community members or stakeholders or those to address the board. And we call that audience for guests. And I don't know that we have any audience for guests. I would not given any tonight. But we're going to make it available now. And if you're watching online and you say at a future meeting I would be interested, it's at this time of the meeting that we want to hear from you as you can inform us. But at this point in time, without any audience for guests members, we will move on with our agenda. The consent agenda is number four on our agenda and it is a process by which a number of uniform items that are consistent get lumped together and the board will approve them with one recommendation. And that is our consent agenda. Prior to a consent agenda, members have the right to ask for an item to be removed for further discussion. And so there is lots of information that we have been given to review and look at the various parts of the consent agenda. We have a very short consent agenda tonight because of the specialists of this meeting. Board members, are there any special items that you want to remove from the consent agenda? There are not, and I don't see, and I got the look there that no, we don't have anyone else that is spread, communicated they would like to do that. If as a community member, you would like to participate in audience for guests at any future meeting, please fill out the form online. You can get it at cfbisd.edu and submit that prior to 5 o'clock the day before our meeting and it gives you an opportunity, we'll call on you to then come. So there were no items that were removed from the consent agenda, so we will continue to go on. Board members, seeing that we have no official request for people to speak, we'll take a motion. Then is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Brady?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Hatfield seconds that motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please raise your hand. With a vote of seven in favor and zero refusals, then that motion passes. And so next would, on our agenda would be any items that were removed. There were none, so we will slide through that and come on down and look at the budget Mr. Martin, I think you're up again.
I don't have any further comments on the budget unless you have any questions for me and we would recommend your approval of the budget.
Board members, any other questions or questions in general for Mr. Martin or about the budget? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? There is a second from Eliana Garza. All right. Any discussion?
Just general comment that I think, you know, I've made quite clear before, just us as the board, this is not a sustainable path for us to take. We made that choice as a board on some of the investments that we wanted to do on compensation and other items that we felt would have been in the best interest. But I've said, hope is not a management strategy, but we have to hope that something, because something changes in the legislature to improve the funding for public education because we can look at the difference between our 2020, 23-'24 budget and our 24-'25 and the district has cut expenditures significantly. I know they continue to do that. We have requested that and that's the focus, but we can't, we can't continue. This is not sustainable.
Yeah, your comment is duly noted and it is certainly a concern for our finance department, all of our administration's staff and everyone. We're going to do the best we can and hopefully the state is going to help us out some. But the struggle of how we pay for everything when it's been over six years since the basic even allotment has been changed, it is tough. So any other comments? Yes?
I just want to say thank you to the finance team. I know we've asked a lot of questions and really wanted to seek to understand the state of where we're at. School finance is not easy to understand, but it's also, it's complex. But as we move forward, as Ms. Herbacheck said, this is not sustainable, but we also have to put kids first. And the efforts that we've made to hold ourselves accountable to putting kids first, I think, is important. And as we go forward and we're looking at additional ways to continue to mitigate, I really appreciate the administration's work to try to do as much as they can to keep the money with the children because in the end, that's what really matters. And yes, we're having to make some tough cuts, some tough decisions about things that we want and need, but the more money we keep with the kids and the teachers that instruct those children on a daily basis, it's so critical. So I really appreciate the efforts that you guys are making.
Well, thank you for the kind comments and Carla is wonderful. She's great.
So we'll see you guys in Austin when we go tell our legislatures what our.
Yeah. Good comments, Ms. Hatfield. Clearly, we started this meeting by saying the district has high achievement for all students as our goal and that requires appropriate funding. And we want there to be high achievement for all students. That's the commitment of this board. Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve the budget as presented. And a second, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Ms. Canada, all six voted yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did we also tell you we're going to put it on your credit card if there's any?
Sure. It'll melt in about two seconds.
Okay, mine too. Thank you. We're going to move on with our agenda and, you know, as we work through this, there are several again, issues that we have to do, a couple of pieces that include specific wording and the way we are required to actually put that information out. Letter D on our agenda is that. And so we have approved the tax rate and now we need to adopt the specific information about the tax rate. And I don't have a copy of. And I don't have a copy of you all's agenda in front of me, I have separate stuff, but I... Okay. All right, so the first piece up for beds, as they say, is the one to call for specific language for providing for defeasance, and calling for redemption of certain currently outstanding district obligations. Mr. Martin, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, we voted on the budget.
Right.
Were we going to vote on the tax rate now?
Yes.
Yes, and that's separate from the defeasance discussion. So our recommendation on the tax rate is to maintain it flat at .9836, allocated between M and O at .7552, and INS at .2284, for a total of 9836.
Right. And so this does require specific language. Board members, do I have someone who would like to read that motion with the specific language?
Can I get some clarification? Are we on 5C, or are we on 5D?
5D.
We're skipping 5C?
Yes, I think I got you out of order, I apologize.
Okay, so we are doing 5D.
D.
So we're not doing the defeasance.
It looks like we're going to have to go back and do that, after we do this.
Thank you.
Is that right?
I apologize, I got you out of order.
So, yeah, it looks like, yeah, so I think it's not our, it's how it was put on the agenda. So Randy is correct, so we'll do 5D first.
All right, well then, let us go ahead and step back to 5C at this point.
Yes, and that's the defeasance of...
That's the defeasance, and it does, there is a specific motion verbiage for this one as well. So we will go ahead and entertain a motion as read for 5C.
Yes, for the defeasance, we have our debt, as you know, voted debt, and as we have excess collections, we can choose to use those to pay off debt early. And that's what this item is really about, is the early repayment of debt, so that we can avoid interest costs on that debt. Rather than keep paying interest, we can pay it off and eliminate the interest as we pay off debt. We have with us tonight John Hall, he's our bond attorney, and he's going to come up and cover this item in some detail, and give you his comments. And John, if you would, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. John Hall with Cantu Hard and Montoya have the privilege of serving as your co-bond counsel with our friends at Walsh Gallegos. I think the last time I was here, we may have been selling some bonds from the bond election that passed not too long ago, and now comes what I consider defeasance and redemption season, which is what happens in August for a lot of districts throughout the state. I'll share with you that I will have had, in some form or fashion, probably 25 meetings this month for this same exact activity, which is, you have money that builds up in your interest and sinking fund, either due to maybe a little bit more robust collections, or the benefit of having higher interest rates and earning more in that investment account. And that money builds to a point where you get to a juncture in the road where you can basically deposit money to redeem bonds or defees bonds, depending upon the situation. You know, there's a couple key tenets in this that sometimes get lost, in that, you know, Mr. Martin said it very appropriately earlier tonight, is that the interest and sinking fund is really a one-way street. You can never take money from your interest and sinking fund and take it to the general fund, but you can take money from the general fund and deposit it into the interest and sinking fund. That's generally what you don't want to do, because that means you don't have enough money in your interest and sinking fund to make your bond payment. Thankfully, that's not the case here, and that's why you want to always maintain some amount of balance, because the one thing that you can't predict 100% is just how strong collections, tax collections, whether it be current or total, will be for the next year. It's usually pretty consistent if all things are normal, but you get a situation where, like COVID, or some other unique event that causes maybe a snafu in the economy, it could change collection rates, which means you want to make sure you've got enough money in that interest and sinking fund to make your payment on your bonds. Otherwise, it creates a whole number of bad outcomes, which is drawing on PSF, and it's just, thankfully, something that no district has yet have to do in Texas, but it's, if it would happen, it's a pretty onerous situation. So I state that as to, I often get the question, why can't we use this extra money for instructional education? It's just the way that the statutes are set up, is that INS funds can only be used to repay debt. So when we have excess funds, what we usually try to do is work with the district to set some type of level that the district expects as a minimum, that they will have on hand to redeem or defees bonds for the coming tax year. Then as the tax year matures, you get into November, December, January, February, your tax collections start really showing up, and you know exactly how much you're going to collect. Then sometime before you get to this point next year where you're setting your tax rate for 25, 26, we'll work with the district to deposit funds to either redeem or defees bonds. And that helps you also manage your tax rate, it helps you shorten your debt, it also helps you create capacity to sell eventually the other $316 million of bonds you have outstanding, and have it fit into your budget and your capital plan, to where it's of minimal impact to the bondholders. As you can tell, I could talk about this all night. This stuff interests me, but I know after being on I-35 probably for four and a half hours, it's maybe not the most interesting thing that you can hear. So let me open it up for any specific questions, because I want to make sure that if anybody has any nuance or any explanation they want to hear, I provide it. But again, I'll give you my phone number, my card, I will talk about this stuff all night, text you, exchange emails, but if you don't want to, I won't take it personally.
Mr. Hall, thank you very much. Board members, are there any specific questions? As we were talking about this process, one of the interesting things that I learned about it is that it also assisted us in reducing our Robin Hood, I know they don't like that term, but it changed the amount, we paid $54 million in Robin Hood last year, and it's down to 12, I believe. So this process of defeasance and being prudent with our bonds situation was very effective for us.
The more that you can pay out of INS, the better, because there is no recapture, even though they don't state it as recapture, as Mr. Martin pointed out, it's 100% benefit of the district, all the INS funds. So you're absolutely correct.
Right. We have specific language that we will use for the motion for 5C. Do I have a Board member who would like to read that into a motion? Go ahead, Ms. Herbatik.
I move that the Board of Trustees adopt a resolution providing for the defeasance and redemption of certain currently outstanding district obligations.
Okay, I have a motion for Ms. Herbatik for this item, is there a second? Ms. Benavides, there is a second. Any discussion, Board members? All right, seeing none, I'll ask you to vote in the affirmative by raising your hand. This candidate is seven in favor. Mr. Hall, again, thank you for coming and being here, and for your assistance to us over the years.
John, just to be, just as a note, I believe this is going to be an annual event, if we choose to do that, you know, the potential of paying off debt early again, this resolution is not a one-time resolution, it's something we would have to bring to you every year.
Right, but it would be something that we look at each year with the adoption of the budget.
Yes, sir, this would be a good time to do it. You don't have to do it with adoption of the budget, but it's a good time to do it.
Right. Okay, thank you. All right, so now we will move to 5D. And we again have a motion that requires specific language, and Board members, would someone like to read this language? Ms. Brady?
I move that the property tax rate remain the same by the adoption of a total tax rate of 0.98360, with the said rate consisting of a tax rate of 0.7552 for M and O, and 0.2284 for debt service.
Okay. We have a motion from Ms. Brady, is there a second? Ms. Garza Rojas is the second. Any discussion? Ms. Herbatik?
I understand the switch, I mean, on the tax rate, in the two different buckets, but over the past couple of years, we have moved with the effort to reduce our overall tax rate, and I think that's something that we should consider at this time as well to continue for that benefit to our taxpayers, understanding it's not a lot, I understand. So I'd like to amend that motion.
Okay. Is there, is there language for the amendment?
Yes.
Yes?
So I would like to amend the motion that the property tax rate be reduced by 0.005 by the adoption of a total tax rate of .97860, with said rate consisting of a tax rate of .7552 for M and O, and .2234 for debt service.
All right. Ms. Herbatik has suggested an amendment. Before we get to that amendment, I think it is important to also remind ourselves that the current tax rate as proposed in our documents here includes compression this year, and the tax is less, it's been going down because of mandatory compression rates that we are required to do. So Board members, any discussion about the amendment, or about the regular motion? Ms. Hatfield?
I think something to consider about an amendment like this is that when we look at the fact that there has been compression, and we're looking at reducing the tax rate to the benefit of the taxpayer while it's minor, when we go out for another bond, they're going to remember when we made things the same, and when we gave them a little bit. But I also think that the INS, putting more tax rate in the INS is a large benefit to the taxpayer, because over time, they're going to see a large savings in the fact that we're going to be paying more debt off faster, which is a benefit to the taxpayer. And so I just think this is, it's really important to think about both sides of it. One, reducing the M and O does give a small benefit to the taxpayer, but also increasing the INS shows the taxpayer that we are really thinking carefully about the fact that we are going to be able to pay off debt earlier, because we're putting more in the INS side.
Okay, good comment. Other comments? Yes, Ms.?
Well, I want to expand, you know, on that, because, yes, this is a long-term benefit. A reduction of the tax rate, but still an increase on the INS is a long-term benefit to the taxpayers, which I think is our responsibility to do for the financial success of the district. But also on that comment from the INS side, if we were to ever go out for another bond at that time, you know, I think it would be prudent to take that into consideration and determine bonding, you know, bonding capacity on the point to the current tax rate instead of the increased INS tax rate, since that is specifically being done to pay off debt.
All right.
That's just my opinion.
Okay.
For somebody to remember for...
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right.
I'm not going to ask.
Okay.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, ma'am.
So by adopting the alternate resolution of saving that, I don't know, is that five thousandths of a half?
Half a cent.
Okay. So what is that going to save, the average taxpayer, if, to do that alternate resolution?
Yeah, that five thousandths of a dollar, which would be a half a cent on the tax rate. So it'd go from, it would go from, you know, the, anyway, it'd be a half a cent, it would be approximately, one cent on the tax rate brings in about, about $3 million, so it would be, half a cent would be about a half of that, or about a million and a half.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
My follow-up is, the average taxpayer is going to save how much on their taxes?
Oh...
Average, I know it's not perfect, but...
Yeah, I'm just trying to think that in my head, it's probably $5, $5 to $6, I would guess.
But if they pay that now, then we can pay off our debt faster.
That's correct.
Just, I always want to be clear on that before...
Yeah, don't hold me that $5 or $6, I'm doing that in my head, but...
It's not 500, it's not, it's not 500?
It's not, no.
Okay. It's not significant at all. So it would behoove us to go ahead and pay that money, to pay that debt off as fast and soon as we can, because then we're paying less in the long run, correct?
Yes.
Just making sure. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Other questions or comments? By protocol, we will vote on whether to approve the amendment first. So all those in favor of the amendment as offered by Ms. Herbatik, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Okay, by a vote of four to two, the amendment does not pass. Did I, did you not, I saw your...
She was...
Okay, so the vote was four to three, that the amendment would pass, not pass.
That's correct, that's what I saw.
Okay. So then, on the floor is a motion to, as brought to us, to approve the tax rate, and that motion was seconded. Is there any discussion about that second? No. If not, then all in favor of approving the tax rate as submitted in our documents. Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, a vote of five, all opposed. Two, Ms. Hatfield, Ms. Herbatik are the two. So that motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. I believe this brings us to the place where, if there are any comments from Board members regarding posted amendment, agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, hearing none, then I believe we've reached the end of our agenda, and we will call this meeting concluded at 6:48.